Here.
Ms. Ramsey, here. Chair Pons.
Here.
Vice Chair Dent.
Here.
Ms. Kernscheer.
Here.
Okay.
Ms. Prescott.
Here.
Ms. Red Cross.
Here.
Okay, thank you, and I apologize for the delay. So we have no minutes to approve. It takes us right into open forum, which is an opportunity for anybody to come forward who'd like to address the commission. Seeing no one, I'll close the open forum, and we'll move right into quarterly reports, and turn it over to the director.
Before we get started, I just want to make one minor change to our agenda. Instead of Mr. Aaron Hawkins from Robertson Farmers &amp; Cox being here tonight, we do have Mr. Adam Duncan. And so that's the amendment or change I would like to make.
Okay. Welcome, Mr. Duncan. So we have a presentation and discussion of the quarterly financial report.
Okay. Our financial report for the second quarter of fiscal year 2024. The authority has generated $112,863 in rent revenues. This amount brings our year-to-date total to $230,282, which represents 51% of our projected financial fiscal year operating budget of for rent revenues at $451,508. In the other income line item, we generated $9,786. That brings our year-to-date total to $17,740. And this represents 60% of our projected budget amount of $29,480. And as you can see, we're trending well in this line item. As I've indicated numerous times, we get our revenues from this line item from maintenance charges, from our laundry service contracts, and from our residence debt set off. In the HUD operating subsidy fund, the authority has received $101,699 this quarter. Our year-to-date total for this line item is $202,324, which represents 52% of our projected budgeted amount of $387,000. For our HUD capital fund grant subsidy, we've received to date $29,305. And we project projected in this budget amount of $380,000. And lastly, as a revenue source, we've received $70,568 from Virginia Housing. And this was to provide funding for replacement of our HVAC systems at our family sites. This grant has officially been closed out due to the completion of this project, and we were able to do about 15, I'm sorry, 13 HVAC replacements with those funds. The total amount of revenue generated for year-to-date for the second quarter, first and second quarter, is $550,219. Our expenses came in at $679,725. As you can see, our expenses are over revenue by $129,505. And that's not anything that's uncommon. We usually run behind our, I guess, you know, have our revenues, our expenses over revenues during this first and second quarter. And then coming in around the third and fourth, that's when we get our capital funds. And so that kind of puts us back where we are on firm ground or firm footing for us to usually have a surplus at the end of the fiscal year. Our, during this reporting period, our checking accounts, our deposits, our investments have a total balance of $1,010,658. And with that, I'm glad to answer any questions that you may have regarding the first and second quarters.
Do any commissioners have any questions?
No questions.
Thank you, Mr. Franklin.
Thank you.
Want to move into the quarterly operating reports?
All right. I'm going to try to go through this rather quickly. But if you have any questions in terms of what we have in this report, I'd be glad to entertain those. relates to public housing, there were 165 inspections conducted for this quarter. Those inspections include housekeeping, exterminating complaints, and notifications of issues from a variety of different areas or reasons. Thirty reexaminations were conducted during this quarter. We also had 32 lease amendments that were conducted. Regarding work orders, we had 199 work orders that have been completed, and nothing has really changed. We are still short a staff person. We did, we were fortunate enough to hire a maintenance tech, but he only lasted three weeks. So we are back to working with contractors, and we pull our efforts together to lend helping hands where and when we can. Things are still getting done. Current outstanding balances, we have 20 units with outstanding balances right now. The total is $2,462.07. And we have filed unlawful detainers for those funds that's assigned for those residents, and so we'll be working on those going forward. On a positive note, our debt set off, we were able to receive $8,680.19, and that is through the Virginia State Tax Collections that we are able to kind of pull when folks get their income tax returns. And so that's a positive. Workforce housing, we are working with a group at NACA for homebuyer courses. It's a course that we host, and we have 157 participants. So that's a very popular course that we are glad to be a part of. Total number of four participants is 200, and we, I mean, we'll probably exceed that, you know, as far as the interest. And one of the positive things about this program is that once you get in it, they work with you to the point where you actually can actually acquire a home. So a lot of good resources come out of this relationship. And of course, our employees who are participating in our workforce housing are a part of that as well. As you know, we have 13 workforce rental homes that we manage, and they're all occupied, and we actually have a waiting list. So whenever we see an opportunity, we will bring that to the board's attention. Hopefully, we can try to expand that because there's great interest. And certainly, if we open it up to, well, let me just say this, I do have an interest as the executive director to look at workforce housing as being something that we open up for the workforce of Williamsburg. Because, I mean, that's the issue, right? We have a lot of people who actually work in our city, but actually have a difficult time finding an opportunity to rent. And so if we, through the strategic plan, use this as an opportunity to kind of expand upon that, we already see the success of the workforce housing program within our own ability to manage it. Can you imagine what we can do if we open it up? So I think there lies the opportunity. I'm kind of on the soapbox a little bit, but I think you, I hope you can see the opportunity that we, if we take advantage of it going forward. Public housing waiting list, we plan to open up the waiting list. We have an online process. We have the date of May 30th and 31st when we will be doing that. Right now, we have 478 eligible applicants, and usually we like to have a nice pool of applicants to pull from when we're actually trying to find people to take advantage of opportunities that become available within our public housing communities. But we are, I guess you could say our number count is rather low at this time. So we're looking forward to that. Regarding our project updates, the, there's an opportunity for us to replace the trash compactor at the Bladen Building. The existing one has been there since the building was built, so that was in the 80s, and so it served us well. And it's gotten to the point where we can no longer find parts for it. And so the thing that we will be focused in right now is to enter into a contract to do a replacement. We have an estimated cost of, well, contracted cost of $22,951. And so we'll be looking forward to moving in that direction for that upgrade.
Piece of equipment that's in the building?
That is in the building. It really is an asset, but at this time, when you look at it, you can tell why it needs to be replaced. We've done everything we can to keep it going, and so it's time.
And it saves us from having 37 trashcans out front.
Absolutely, absolutely. We, with staff and our tenant help, we're able to pull that can out, and they come and pick it up. And so you don't see the trash. Go to the, we have areas in the building where you can kind of throw your trash in the chute, and you don't even think about it anymore. And it's down there doing its job, compacting the trash, getting it sorted. And then we just, we pull that box out, and they come and pick it up. And so we want to continue that same setup. Regarding our security cameras, they're working wonderfully. I mean, we are able to, with them fully engaged, we can see all the things that we need to see. We can force lease violations. I'm sure Chief Dunk can tell you how effective they've been in terms of doing investigations. So I want to thank the commission for, and City Council for their support with the cameras because we able to kind of keep our community safe, I'll put it that way. We are also getting ready to start. In fact, we've done quite a bit of work with regards to the laundry service, laundromats. We actually, as you know, we have a contractor, they're doing their submittals right now. We are doing, we're in the final stages of signing the contract, and we hope to get started the 1st of June. One of the things I'll run by you, as maybe get some feedback, if you thought it would be a good idea for us to have something like a groundbreaking ceremony to acknowledge the significance of the investment and future development. But that's something that you all can decide on. We would like to do it, but only if you would like to participate. And that's, to me, it really has to be based on what you all decide.
I think we'd all like to be there.
Yep. And lastly, as far, with regards to the updates, as you know, we mentioned the ability to put up bulletin boards at each family site. So we did, we were able to purchase those. They have to be constructed. We plan on putting those together and having them installed this month. And so we have another means of getting the information out to all the residents. So we're looking forward to that as an, you know, as an investment.
Yeah, that might be something you promote with the EDA, you know, so they can promote it to businesses for job opportunities.
Absolutely, absolutely. So anyone who's looking, maybe they can work through us, and we can post those job listings, whatever, to help to get the word out. So it's another resource. I won't go into anything as it relates to public housing quarterly activities and employee training unless you all have something that you want me to elaborate on. And with that, I do have some attachments to this report. You can take a look at our newsletters. As you know, that's how we communicate with our residents. We do have some pictures of activities that we have coordinated and participated with at the Bladen Building. And so with that, I'll entertain any questions you may have.
So no question, but just going back to the workforce housing opportunity, I think, speaking for myself, I think the opportunity to expand those single-family homes or workforce housing beyond just our residents would be a great opportunity. I think being able to provide homes in a meaningful way to meet that need, you know, makes sense that the housing authority play a role in that. I think, obviously, having bought some additional houses and seeing the demand there. I know I hear all the time about the need for workforce housing, affordable housing. And so doing that in a coordinated way to make it available certainly meet a need. So when those opportunities do exist, I hope that we can hear about them.
Absolutely. I would certainly be the first to throw my hand up and bring it to your attention.
Does anybody have any other questions or comments?
Mr. Franklin, is there any particular challenges with the recruitment and retention of the maintenance folks?
Well, if I had the ability to read minds and read the intentions of the individuals that we bring on, I wouldn't be bringing them on. This last stand is a story that I'm, I can't even, I've never experienced this before. Since you've asked a specific question, and I'm going off on a tangent, but I'm trying to stay focused. So I think we, the next batch is going to be successful. We have one gentleman that, I mean, he came in and he has hit the ground running, and he's still on probation. And if we can get another one like him, we are set. But it's, I don't want to say we have a jinx going on, but I'm going to put some sage on it.
Well, I'll just share, even in my own experience at my properties, it's hard to find a maintenance guy. You can hire a great one, and, you know, he works for two, three, four months, or she, you know, and seeing another, doing crazy things out in the community.
I have to share the story, we'll have to talk later. I could tell you some more, I could give you the details. It's interesting.
We won't, we won't put that in the public record.
I understand.
Okay, so no questions?
No.
Ms. Prescott, Mr. Red Cross? Okay, thank you. Takes us now to new business. And so the next is a presentation of the WHRA annual financial report for FY 2023. Mr. Duncan, welcome. You're missing the hair that we would normally see.
Mr. Hawkins, yes, he takes pride in his hair, for sure.
I would, too.
Thank you for the opportunity to present the annual audit report. I want to begin by reading our letter to you all, the Board of Commissioners. This is our communication with those charged with governance. We've audited the financial statements of the housing authority for the year ended September 30th, 2023. Professional standards require we provide you with information about our responsibilities under generally accepted auditing standards, as well as certain information related to the plan, scope, and timing of our audit. We have discussed this with you in our letter dated February 14th of 2024. Professional standards also require that we communicate to you the following information related to our audit. Management is responsible for the selection and use of appropriate accounting policies. Significant policies used by the authority are described in Note 1. No new policies were adopted, and the application of existing policies was not changed during 2023. We noted no transactions entered to by the authority during the year for which there is a lack of authoritative guidance or consensus. All significant transactions have been recognized in the financial statements. Accounting estimates are an integral part of the financial statements prepared by management and are based on management's knowledge and experience about past and current events and assumptions about future events. Certain estimates are particularly sensitive because they're significant to the financial statements and because of the possibility that future events affecting them may differ significantly from those expected. The most sensitive estimate affecting your statements were the useful lives of fixed assets and the allowance for doubtful accounts. We evaluated the key factors and assumptions used to develop useful lives and the allowance for doubtful accounts in determining that it is reasonable in relation to the financial statements taken as a whole. The financial statement disclosures are neutral, consistent, and clear. We encounter no significant difficulties in dealing with management in performing and completing our audit. Standards also require us to accumulate all known and likely misstatements identified during the audit, other than those that are clearly trivial, and communicate them to the appropriate level of management. There were no misstatements detected as a result of audit procedures, and any corrected by management were immaterial either individually or in the aggregate to the financial statements taken as a whole. We're pleased to report no disagreements with management arose during the audit. We have requested certain representations from management. They're included in our representation letter obtained from you all dated March 15th, 2024. Some, in some cases, management may decide to consult with other accountants over certain situations. To our knowledge, there are no such consultations with other accountants. We generally discuss a variety of matters, including the application of accounting principles and auditing standards with management each year prior to retention as the entity's auditors. These discussions occurred in the normal course of our professional relationship, and our responses were not a condition to our retention. We applied certain limited procedures to the management's discussion and analysis, which is required supplementary information to the basic financial statements. We did not audit this and do not express an opinion or provide any assurance on the management's discussion and analysis. This information is intended solely for use of the Board of Commissioners, Executive Director, and Management of the Williamsburg Redevelopment and Housing Authority, and is not intended to be and should not be used by anyone other than these specified parties. I'll go into the actual annual financial report, and I'll start by just briefly going over our independent auditor's report. And in the second paragraph, in our opinion, the financial statements present fairly, in all material respects, the financial position of the Williamsburg Redevelopment and Housing Authority as of September 30th, 2023. This is the best opinion that an audit can have. It's the cleanest, and basically, it's grade A+. So we have no management comments or anything like that to address with the board. I'll briefly go over the management's discussion and analysis. This is kind of a narrative, as if we were discussing informally the results of the year. Table 1 compares the authority's financial position for the years ended September 30th, 2023, and 2022. The total assets of the authority were down 2.25%. Total liabilities down 3.35%. And total net position, or you might say equity, of the authority was down 2.2%. And then it'll go, there's more detail listed for individual asset and liability positions there. Table 2 is the changes in net position. We see an operating loss for 2023 of $121,916. This compared to a positive income for 2022 of $16,000. And we can see, again, their net position went from about $4.5 million to $4.4 million, a decrease of 2.2%. Table 3 presents a summary of the authority's revenue by source. Very stable results, positive increase of 3.45%. Table 4 does the same for operating expenses, and we can see expenses went up from about $1.2 million to about $1.3 million, so an increase of about 14%. And there's some more individual details of some explanations as to why this occurred, most notably $118,000 increase in salaries and benefits. Table 5 kind of analyzes the budget. Total revenue was ahead of budgeted expectations by 11%, however, total expenses were more than budgeted by about 16%, so about a 5% variation in total there. Table 6 shows the capital assets, which would be buildings, land, equipment, things like that. There were no purchases during the year, and again, the estimated depreciation on those assets for the year was $63,000. Table 7 is the capital funding available at the end of 2023 was $71,000. Table 8, analysis of debt, it's been $114,000. There's a, I think it's an interest-free note that's ongoing with the city, I believe.
The city.
Yes. And then the actual financial statements, statement of net position, again, that just mirrors the tables in the management's discussion and analysis. We see total assets of $4.6 million, total liabilities of $193,000, so a total equity or net position of $4.4 million. Then we see the statement of revenues, expenses, and changes in net position. Again, mirrors the MDA, change of negative $103,000, so from $4.5 million down to $4.4 million. And then an important statement of cash flows. This shows a summary of cash beginning and ending for the year. It lists kind of how cash was obtained and where cash was paid out to, and it shows beginning of the year of $950,000 and ending the year of about $870,000. And then there's a reconciliation of how that changes in assets and liabilities affects the cash flow for the year. Then we get to the notes. These kind of go into more details about individual account balances. Note 1 does summarize the significant accounting policies of the authority. Note 2 discusses the cash and investments of the authority, and not included in that cash, the authority does have $276,000 invested with the local government investment pool, which is an allowed investment by the state of Virginia. It's a very common investment to belong to for local government authorities. Note 3, client receivables of $50,000. Note 4, again, this mirrors the fixed asset changes for the year. It also actually breaks this out. The first chart is for low-income housing fund, and then the business activities fund. And then there's other notes that kind of go just into a little bit more detail over certain items. There's some upcoming pronouncements that are going to have to be implemented in future years. There's really nothing to say other than management's currently evaluating the impact these statements will have, or we're not foreshadowing any major changes at all or the way that the statements will be presented. And then after those, we have combining statements that, the grand totals will be the same, it just breaks it out individually by the low-income housing fund and the business activity fund. And then after that, we have some supplementary data required by HUD. These are just items that have to be reported to HUD to obtain the annual funding for the programs. And last but not least, we have our independent auditors' report on internal control over financial reporting and on compliance and other matters. And basically, we are pleased to report that we also issued a perfect opinion on that as well, no items to report there. And we also are required to submit the audit online to HUD's website. I'm pleased to report that that's due June 30th, and I believe as of last week, that has been successfully approved by HUD. I am open to any questions or comments or concerns.
So just one question, maybe from Mr. Franklin. We talked about the net position was obviously less this year, but we saw an increase in the expenses. Did we hire additional people, or was that just cost of insurance and pay raises?
Pay raises, cost of insurance. Well, we've, because we're with the city with regards to that, so we're doing well with what the city's been able to do and find savings. But I would just say that we have a finite set of money, and when we are trying to stay in line with the city's pay rates, of course, that's going to put us into a situation where it makes it seem as if we are overspending. We want to be consistent, but again, we're a little bit different from the city because, you know, where the city may have the ability to do taxation, to keep things moving, we don't have that luxury. It's based on whatever we get from HUD and whatever we generate. So that's one thing. The other is, we talked about it during the reports, you know, being able to find quality staff to allow us to, the ability to keep costs down as far as keeping things in-house. Whenever we have to go out for contracts, that's when things get crazy. And that's been our story for about a year, year and a half now, maybe, maybe two years, on and off. But that's the reason why we've seen steadily increasing costs with regards to the operation. I'm hopeful that will be, that trend will go the other way. Once we get this, a good quality personnel staff, we can start to see some savings.
Yeah, yeah, no question. It's a delegate balance, and essentially, what you're running is a business, even though we're trying to provide valuable service to our citizens. And so, a million dollars in cash will run out pretty quick if we And so, a million dollars in cash will run out pretty quick if we don't increase revenue and decrease expenses.
That's right.
But other than that, sorry?
No, no, I was saying.
Yeah, that was my only question. But my comment would be, I'm glad that you all found, you know, no problems with the reporting and keeping the Housing Authority. So thank you for the report.
Vice Chair.
Questions?
No questions, thank you.
One for me?
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Duncan, thank you so much. Appreciate you coming in.
Do we need?
Oh, I guess we do need him. Motion to accept.
So I move that the Board of Commissioners accept the FY 2023 Annual Financial Report as presented.
Second.
Okay.
Mr. Rogers.
Aye.
Ms. Ramsey.
Aye.
Chair Pons.
Aye.
Chair Dent.
Aye.
Ms. Kernscher.
Aye.
Ms. Prescott.
Aye.
Ms. Redcross.
Aye.
Okay, that takes us to item B, consideration and approval of the Williamsburg Redevelopment Housing Authority 2024-2027 Strategic Plan. Franklin, would you like to make any introductions?
Certainly. We have with us today Mrs. Lindsay O'Price and Mr. Avi Hopkins from Spark Mill. And as you know, we have been working with them since 2023. They have been, they were hired by the authority to provide this information. And they've done quite a bit of work, working with our leadership, with the Housing Authority, and with our stakeholders to get feedback and information, all for the purpose of putting together a quality strategic plan that we can, if, and when the commission, the board decides to move on it, will help guide us in the future. And so with that, I'll turn the floor over to Mr. Hopkins, who will provide a PowerPoint presentation.
Welcome back, Mr. Hopkins.
Thank you. Great to be back. Thank you, Board of Commissioners, Mr. Franklin, for your leadership. Appreciate you. We just have a brief presentation we'd like to share with you regarding the strategic plan. In this process, there has been a group called Strategic Planning Team, a small group, who's helped to guide a lot of this work, Mr. Franklin being part of that, Jelena Burton as well, along with Stacy Kernscher and Pat Dent. So we appreciate their support and effort in this, in this work as well. So, I'll skip that. Just a little preview about the project, going back to where we started, just to bring everyone up to speed. There was a planned research and development by the Strategic Planning Team, made up of staff and board members. We met in the spring of 2024, beginning to identify and understand the housing landscape. Spark Mill, Lindsay and myself worked together with this team to develop the plan and really build out the final areas. The, and again, myself and Lindsay were a strong part of this, this effort. So just a little bit about the roadmap. I think you may have seen this image before, but we have a three-phase project, a process, gather, radiate, and gather, soak, and radiate, I'm sorry. And the gather process incorporates community engagement. And so there were one-to-one interviews with residents, community nonprofit leaders, local government leaders, staff members of WRHA, as well as virtual and in-person focus groups with current WRHA residents. And finally, we did a review of the internal documents. So WRHA leadership sent us internal documents, budget, things of that nature. We were able to review that as a team and incorporate that into the gather phase. Then our soak phase is the point in which we developed a preliminary findings report. I hope all of you had an opportunity to share in reading that report. Just some of the themes that came back, wanted to just remind you about those themes. There seemed to be unclarified roles and HUD knowledge gaps as it related to, not just, as related to community and leadership. And so we wanted to make sure that we, that was lifted up. And these are all things the community is saying back to us. This is not our opinion. This is, this is all community work in words. Williamsburg needs more housing solutions was a second theme. Deeper collaboration and partnerships was also brought up in, in our feedback piece. Fostering self-sufficiency and equitable support and residents as partners. So these themes were ones that were lifted up and came back to us the most in terms of community feedback through individual interviews, through the focus groups that we conducted. And so from this report, we had an opportunity to sit down with the SPT team, review what we found from the community, discuss it, share in it, and then begin to map forward how we would move. And so some of the pathways that came out of the work we did in the preliminary findings report kind of showed themselves in, into the strategic plan. And so we get to the point of radiate, where the strategic plan goals are set. And so these are the, the plan goals that came out of our work together. Enhancing community value and perception, upgrade and expand housing infrastructure, empower residents through active engagement, and enhancing operational efficiency and autonomy. So just want to talk a little bit more specifically about each of these goals because there were strategies connected to each of them. And so goal one, again, enhancing community value and perception of public housing. The impact of this goal, we predict, will be public housing is reinforced as a cornerstone of community development, enhancing its reputation through strategic partnerships, and active civic engagement. There are three strategies that came out of this particular goal. 1.1 being to form strategic partnerships with local businesses, educational institutions, and nonprofits to enhance the visibility and understanding of WRHA's contributions. 1.2, to partner with the city to develop a comprehensive marketing campaign that showcases the positive impact of WRHA on the community. And then 1.3, to organize regular community events that foster dialogue between city officials, residents, and the broader community. Goal two brought us to upgrading and expanding housing infrastructure, which, you know, you all were doing a great job of. Wanted to just lift that up. But there were continued opportunities as we interviewed and talked to the community. And so the impact of this is that housing standards, community aesthetics, and the availability are elevated with an improved affordable living spaces and robust infrastructure rehabs are occurring. And so some of the strategies that came out of this particular goal, there were three, again. 2.1, strengthen and expand the workforce housing initiative to provide more affordable opportunities for the employees in the city of Williamsburg, which Mr. Franklin talked about earlier in this, in this piece, and was something that was, again, enhanced, it was talked about quite a bit. It was elevated in our conversations with the community about how important workforce housing was and how significant the impact had been of the work that had been already done. 2.2, continue to implement an ongoing infrastructure improvement program that supports the rehabilitation of current properties. Again, just an acknowledgement that work is, is happening. It's, it's being acknowledged, it's being seen. Impact to the residents is, is clear, them acknowledging that this work is happening, but that, you know, there's still always opportunities for us to improve. And so that there might be opportunities to address, again, continued rehabilitation of the current properties. And then 2.3, explore exterior housing improvements that, through beautification programs and initiatives. And this was one that we heard in the focus groups quite a bit from the residents, is that, you know, as appreciative as they are of having space to live that is respectable and clean, they also would like to see more beautification, especially from an external or exterior perspective, that, you know, there are opportunities for flowers that were there, you know, that, or growing things in the space. It's primarily what was raised, you know, that the, the properties are being maintained, but there's still some space to beautify and to just bring that, bring that aspect up to speed. Goal three was about empowering residents through active engagement. And so the impact of this is empowerment of residents with the knowledge and skills for self-sufficiency, ensuring their voices are instrumental in shaping community decisions, and that the residents' voices, there are platforms for residents' voices to be heard throughout the process and throughout their residency. And so 3.1, establish and expand programs that encourage active participation of residents towards self-sufficiency, that the residents would like to see more of that happening, and that there's opportunities to kind of bridge, bridge the gap of, of employment and, and, you know, their time as a resident with WRHA. 3.2, offer comprehensive education on HUD programs to empower residents with a thorough understanding of community guidelines and opportunities. This goes back somewhat to the gap that we're experiencing with the community and them not quite understanding how HUD works, to simplify it, you know, that some of the concerns that they have are not, are concerns that, you know, WRHA hears, but oftentimes because of HUD stipulations, it can't be changed. This is just the way that HUD works. And so kind of closing that gap would help the community and residents kind of understand how HUD works. 3.3 is develop resident-focused opportunities to ensure resident input is central to the decision-making process. So, you know, what can be done through resident councils, opportunities for residents to be together, share concerns, challenges, celebrate are all opportunities that the residents would like to see. Just more of that, more resident-focused opportunities to, to share in the voice and the, and the progress that WRHA is making. And then goal four is, this is primarily internal. So the way we often structure our strategic plans is to look at the first few goals as more of an external, community-facing work, and then the final goal ultimately will be focused on the internal practices that can help support the previous goals. And so enhancing operational efficiency and autonomy speaks to that. So in this impact, we see the emergence of more efficient and self-reliant organization. So 4.1, you're communicating the relationship between WRHA and the city, including the relationship between the respective governing bodies and the role in the city and the governance of WRHA, which was lifted up by many of the stakeholders in terms of not quite understanding how, how it all works, how the council are also Board of Commissioners, and how, how it functions in its, in its individual or separate roles. And so that was important to, to lift out. And so how can we communicate that better? 4.2, formalizing a plan and shift relationship with HUD and share with stakeholders. That was something we heard quite a bit as well, a plan or idea about some divestment from HUD, move away from HUD, what that looks like, more understanding around that plan, and being able to communicate that more clearly to the community. And then 4.3, developing a sustainability plan that includes measures for cost-saving and generating revenue. So we just heard the accountant's report, but this is all, keeping all of that in mind, and then moving towards a greater financial autonomy for WRHA as it currently exists. And so we would hope after your review that the board would approve of the strategic plan, so we get that board approval. The next step for us after that approval would be to work with WRHA staff a little more closely in implementation, which is the execution of the plan, meaning that we would look at goals, strategies, and from those strategies, begin to build out tactics, steps that the authority can take to begin to execute on the goal of completing these strategies and goals. And then we would then have a submission to Virginia Housing. So once we have the approval of the strategic plan, and we have a Virginia Housing Plan in place, and we've done the implementation work, then that would be submitted by WRHA to Virginia Housing, at which time that would end our time and project together upon approval of, from Virginia Housing, of the plan from Virginia Housing. Any questions or comments around the plan?
Well, thank, thank you for the presentation and coming in and helping us go through this process, I think. You know, oftentimes, you know, we all don't get to hear from residents directly, although I'm sure we, we've all had our individual conversations. And so being able to, to bring you in to, to gather some of this information, I'm, I'm glad that there wasn't anything glaring, no, no real challenges, but certainly some easy things that we could be working on, like communication.
Yes.
And I took note of the newsletter that goes out, and that strikes me as a great opportunity to, to provide some of that information, maybe a, you know, a piece in there every once in a while about the, the interaction between the city and WHRA and how this board meets also as council, and what the benefits of that really means.
Absolutely.
Because absent the city's involvement, certainly the housing conditions wouldn't be the same, and then the level of service that are attained. So I think it's important that we, we communicate that better, not, not as a bragging thing, but as a, as a way of just, you know, providing information and how it, how it doesn't serve as a disadvantage to them, it's actually an advantage. So we could probably work on that. And certainly, I appreciate the feedback in terms of beautifying and, gosh, you know, is there an opportunity to, to partner with some of the residents to, to take on some of these responsibilities? One of the things that just came to mind, like a community garden, you know, probably lots of ideas that could be explored and all that, and that could be a conversation driven by residents. So, so I think moving forward is, is, you know, with, through this process, if that's the recommendation of the staff, then I certainly would support it.
Great.
Vice Chair.
Yeah.
I mean, you and Stacy were on.
Yeah, thank you for being here. Obviously, we were, Stacy and I were a part of the Strategic Planning Team, and, and I said this during the, as we were preparing this plan, one thing that I like about it, it is not a 500-page document.
Right.
Because it carries the same significance as a 500-page document would, but people can pick it up and, and look at it and not feel like they're overwhelmed by trying to read through a document. So it's very pointed. As the mayor pointed out, there's things in there that are low-hanging fruit that can be addressed relatively easy. And again, I was, I was happy to be a part of it.
Thank you.
Yeah, I, I just sit here, and I, you know, I've seen this before, but I was like, can you all just comment strategic plan my life? Can we just play it like radiate, soak, do this for me? I need this for myself.
That's complicated.
Yeah. But in all, and in all truth, like, this, the process has been so clear, so efficient. I feel like, you know, as a, as a group, I felt at least, like, we really kind of just got a lot done and shared a lot of information, and really, I think that the way that you all guided us was incredibly helpful, and coming out with a plan that is understandable, and you can actually see, like, you know, you could see things happening, like how we could implement some of these things. So I just can't commend you all enough for how you structured this process. And, you know, for, you know, it was just great to, to be a part of it. So thank you. And, yeah, I don't have any questions. All my questions have been answered all along the way. So thank you again.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yes, I, I would just add my comment as far as it being concise and clear, particularly for someone who wasn't involved in it along the way, looking at the finished product. It's easy to understand, and as the mayor and others have said, it's nice to see, too, that underneath the goals, there are likely to be some steps that could be easily implemented. For instance, the city has a beautification fund that's at the Williamsburg Community Fund, and a foundation that might provide some monies available as well. So a lot of different opportunities. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, Avian, Lindsay, thank you. Thanks to Spark Plugs, Spark Mill for coming and being willing to do this review with us. It's helpful to have a, a full plan going forward of what I really saw is a lot of the continuation of work of WRHA. For instance, housing infrastructure was talked about, and we, speaking of infrastructure, talked about an actual groundbreaking that council may attend for laundromat facilities. Another one was resident input and the dissemination of knowledge. And we see the newsletters whenever the WRHA comes in front of us that talks about what events they have going on. So it seems like a lot of what the authority is already doing, then this report backs up and encourages more of, so it'll be helpful to continue that direction. We do appreciate you all professionalizing the strategic plan process.
Thank you.
Ms. Prescott, any comments?
Clear and concise. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Ms. Redcross, anything?
No questions.
Good. Well, so I think we're all ready to accept the plan. Would somebody like to make a motion?
So I move that the WRHA Board of Commissioners approve and accept the Williamsburg Redevelopment and Housing Authority 2024 through 2027 strategic plan.
Second?
Someone said it. Second. I'll say it.
All right.
Third.
Mr. Rogers.
Aye.
Ms. Ramsey.
Aye.
Chair Pons.
Aye.
Vice Chair Dent.
Aye.
Ms. Kernscher.
Aye.
Prescott.
Aye.
Ms. Redcross.
Thank you. Thank you, Avian. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Keep up the good work.
Okay, thank you.
All right, takes us to item C, it's consideration and approval of the Seventh Amendment to the MOU for the triangle building between the MOU for the Triangle Building between the City of Williamsburg and the Williamsburg Redevelopment Housing Authority. Mr. Franklin?
So essentially, we are looking to receive the ability to operate and manage the Triangle Building. That would be coming back to the authority, which I guess for some time now since 2013, the city, Department of Economic Development, has been the caretakers and managers of such. And so we want to be a willing participant in help in bringing that back into the fold. And I don't have any other comments other than saying that I'm glad to be able to be a part of that, if if it if the board so chooses to move in that direction. I would ask if Ms. Yuri, if you have any comments, if you'd like to.
Except she's probably glad to get rid of it. No.
I thought she might. But again, we would like to thank the board for their consideration in this opportunity.
So with that, would you take over, would we take over the leasing and the collection of rents?
So essentially, nothing really changes. What will happen is, when there are concerns, we will be made aware of, just like the Department of Economic Development used to be, or will be, or are now, but will, you know, have been. But we will work with the RJS property management firm, and they actually handle the day-to-day operations in terms of working with the tenants. And so we will manage the budget, and we may be able to use our expertise on some matters that may come about with repairs and and addressing situations at the property. So but essentially, nothing else changes, other than going from economic development to the authority.
Thank you. I don't have any questions. And certainly, I'm comfortable with that. Mr. Vice Chair?
Yeah, no questions.
None for me.
Mr. Prescott or Mr. Redcross now?
No.
Okay. Somebody like to make a motion?
Both. I move that the WRHA Board of Commissioners approve the Seventh Amendment Memorandum of Understanding between the City of Williamsburg and Williamsburg Redevelopment and Housing Authority as drafted and recommended by staff.
Okay.
Mr. Rogers.
Aye.
Ms. Ramsey.
Aye.
Chair Pons.
Aye.
Vice Chair Dent.
Aye.
Ms. Kernscheer.
Aye.
Ms. Prescott.
Aye.
Ms. Redcross.
Aye.
Okay, takes us to item D, Consideration and Approval of the Williamsburg Redevelopment Housing Authority Proposed Flat Rent Schedule for All Bedroom Sizes for 2024. Mr. Franklin?
So every year, we have to update our flat rental rates. And so we're asking board consideration for us to do just that. We do have a tenant who is elected to be a part of the flat rent process. Their rent right now is $910. Based on the HUD changes for 2024, it will go up to $1,030. But the kicker is this, if we were to use their income and do it based on how we value rental rates in public housing, which is based on 30% of your your gross, your income, they will be paying $1,400 a month. So this works out perfectly for them. So but this this is an opportunity that we have the ability to to work with our tenants, and we're asking the board's consideration for approving the rates, the schedule.
So we approve this every year, it's just the schedule changes?
Yes, sir.
Is is there any reason, obviously, there's more people that would benefit from this? Is there a reason they don't choose to benefit?
Well, we notify them. We did this. We sent out a letter back in January of the pending changes, to give them an opportunity to consider. It's only one that has opted for this. I'm not certain what they, whether the opportunities of their income, I guess, would make this a more feasible opportunity. But we don't, you know, we provide the information, it's up to them to decide what they want to do.
It just seems like there would be at least.
You would think it would be more.
There would be some, a few other people out there that would.
Exactly. Exactly.
That would have taken advantage of.
I would agree with you. Absolutely.
No questions, Randy?
No questions.
So just to follow up to Vice Chair Dent's question, what has been the sort of normal number of people who have taken advantage of the flat rate? Was there anyone last year that did?
I think we did have somebody last year. Yeah.
But normally, it's one, maybe?
It's usually, it's no more than five.
Okay.
Yep.
Curious, but.
Yeah, it's it's relatively low number. But, you know, HUD allows it, and so we want to, we try to make sure that we are consistent. And certainly, it would be, in this particular instance, it would be a great savings for for the resident to take advantage of.
And is it a requirement of HUD that you offer a flat rate?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
I have no questions.
And it's part of our ACOP as well.
Okay.
It's written in our ACOP.
Well done, Barb. Outside of what's been asked, I have no questions. It does seem small, but opportunities being promoted and one person elects, fair enough.
Ms. Redcross?
No questions.
Well, I would imagine that some people wouldn't opt into it because their income is low. So then it would be an increase in rent.
Exactly. And I mean, that's like, to your point, it wouldn't be a benefit to them. And then you have the situation, too, where sometimes a fluctuation of jobs, right? So if you're part of that, it's that's your rent, whether you, you know. So if you don't, if you lose your job, then you go back to base rent, which is $50.
Right. So in that sense, it makes, you know, from that perspective, it makes sense that not more people would.
Don't touch it. Don't, you know, don't mess with that.
Right, good. All right. Would somebody like to make a motion?
So I move that the Board of Commissioners approve the Williamsburg Redevelopment and Housing Authority's Proposed Flat Rent Schedule for All Bedroom Sizes for 2024.
Second.
Okay.
Mr. Rogers.
Aye.
Ms. Ramsey.
Aye.
Chair Pons.
Aye.
Vice Chair Dent.
Aye.
Ms. Kernscheer.
Aye.
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 Ms. Redcross.
Okay, takes us to open forum. If anybody in the audience would like to come forward. Seeing no one in the audience, I'll close the open forum.
I want to come forward.
You don't count. Okay, is there a motion to adjourn?
So I move that we adjourn.
Ms. Pickett.
Mr. Rogers.
Aye.
Ms. Ramsey.
Aye.
Chair Pons.
Aye.
Vice Chair Dent.
Aye.
Ms. Kernscheer.
Aye.
Ms. Prescott. Ms. Redcross.
Aye.
Okay, we are adjourned. Thank you very much.